We'll call it order tonight's committee of the whole for the Auburn City Council meeting for June the 6th, 2023. The city council should have the minutes from the committee of the whole meeting of May the 16th of 2023. Are there any additions or corrections for those minutes? If not, does there move to approve?
I move.
Second.
Have a motion as second. Any other comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the minutes are approved. Historic Preservation Commission, this is one of a couple of boards and commissions that is the mayor's responsibility to make these nominations tonight. For this position, I'd like to nominate Ms. Sarah Coleman.
Second.
Sarah is a landscape architecture professor at Auburn University, and I'd just like to read a couple of comments that she made in her application. In addition to learning more about the city's past, I'm eager to contribute to the cultural landscape perspective to Auburn's approach to historic preservation, a method of thoughtfully engaging historic places which I've developed through my research. So she has spent a lot of time in history as well as landscape architecture, teaches at Auburn University, and we appreciate her willingness to do, to serve the Historic Preservation Commission. Is there any other further comments or thoughts? Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. And again, I wanted to say thank you to Steve Manos for serving on the Historic Preservation Commission. All right. Questions on tonight's agenda? Any questions from the council? Okay. I know we have an addition.
Correct. I've added, you've got on the dais, it's item 11A, it's another item of business, it's asking for a temporary street closure on East Magnolia between College and Gay Street, and what this really means is from the bank driveway down to Gay Street. We were approached, AO Tourism was approached months ago by a group called The Great Race. And there's an Auburn alum involved who wants The Great Race that starts in St. Augustine, Florida, and goes on mainly two-lane roads with vintage race cars. And they want to pass through Auburn for lunch, and they'll be overnighting in Birmingham. It's on Sunday, June 25th. And so you did a temporary street closure resolution. We usually do all parades and everything at once in late February, but I wanted to bring this forward to you. This is something that the staff has worked with them handily on, and we're trying to do. They asked for a college street closure. Those are very difficult for us to do. So we're trying this. There'll also be a downtown merchants event in December that has the same partial closure, but a Sunday is a little less difficult for a closure. We need to, we're asking, in the resolution you'll see, from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, it may close a little later than 8:00 AM, but we need to get cars off the street because these cars parked there while these folks eat lunch. It's a free event to the public who can come through and view the cars, sit in the cars, you know, talk to the drivers. It's not costing anyone anything other than a street closure. So I added this tonight. We could have added it on the 20th agenda, but I felt that was a little close to the event. And so, yes, we have given them a permit for this, but we usually get council authorization, and this is just something that came well after we brought the original resolution to you. So we'll do that at the end of the meeting.
Any questions for the city manager?
And there's pictures in your packet about what one looks like in the race map also, just so you can see kind of what they're doing.
Megan, if we were going to view this, what would be the optimal viewing time?
Well, there's a schedule, greatrace.com, and also there's a little bit of schedule on that. They're coming in at noon, so they leave staged from Florida. Let me see where they're overnighting. Actually, they'll be in Tifton, Georgia, overnighting, and then coming, coming into Auburn at lunchtime. And so College Street, they will come up straight up US 29 is my understanding. Again, they keep them off the interstate and so on. So you'll be able to view in downtown fine, and then we'll turn them right onto Magnolia. And then it'll also be quite a sight. They start leaving at 3:30 and pulling them back out, and they'll go straight up College Street and head toward Birmingham. And so, yeah, you'll be able to view them. One of you in particular lives on the route, and we'll have a home view of them passing by, but we don't anticipate a big disruption to traffic, and it's a Sunday afternoon in, in the middle of summer. So hopefully, it'll be a nice event for the community, and we appreciate the economic impact they'll bring by stopping by.
So they're just displaying their classic cars? That's all they're doing?
Yes.
Oh, so no type of event or anything, just?
They'll be having lunch, and they'll set up a few things on the street right there. But, you know, we opted to do this and try this out. We will have it blocked with our new barricades once they all get in. So we'll have, and so we're trying also, out of respect for moving traffic in Auburn, to do a smaller closure.
All right. Any other questions?
So it's free and open to the public.
Okay. All right. Nothing else. Is there a move to adjourn the committee of the whole?
I move.
All right, we are adjourned. This time, we'll open tonight's Auburn City Council meeting for June the 6th, 2023. Lindsey with the roll call.
Adams.
Here.
O'Went.
Here.
Dawson.
Here.
Rizwell.
Here.
Mormon.
Here.
Parsons.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Witten.
Here.
Anne.
Here. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and then remain standing for a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Since it is the first meeting of the month, we have our video prepared that recognizes our employee of the month and our other outstanding employees here at the city vault.
We're proud to introduce you to our June Employee of the Month, and I have a memorandum here from Becky Richardson, the Parks and Rec Director for the City of Auburn. I would like to recognize Athletics and Parks Superintendent Rob Hollinshead as the June Employee of the Month, in recognition of the outstanding job that he has done taking on additional responsibility of overseeing the parks crew and the field crew at the softball complex due to several retirements and absences. He reorganized the work groups, which has resulted in a more efficient maintenance. His attention to detail in upgrading the entrances to the parks, the maintenance of the inclusive playground, and the work on the areas of Kiesel Park that needed attention has brought citizen comments and appreciation. He helped with new commercial spraying contract with the ballfields, parks, and cemeteries, which has proven to be helpful in the mowing schedule and has cut down on complaints about weeds. He has also focused on mulching in several areas, clearing limbs off the trails at Kiesel Park in Town Creek and replacing boards on the boardwalk at Town Creek. His work on the ballfields has resulted in less, less lost days due to rain and the fields being in excellent condition. Feedback from parents and coaches has endorsed this view. Since being hired in October of 2020, Rob has taken on the responsibility of maintaining all of the city's parks and the Auburn softball complex. He has handled these duties well with great feedback from staff and the public. He has also increased the care given to maintaining facilities between tournaments. His work to prepare Kiesel for City Fest resulted in an easy setup day and the park bouncing back so quickly that it was available for public use. Rob is pleasant and energetic member of the department, and I recommend him for the employee of the month. Thank you, Rob, all your hard work. Appreciate it. Yep. with a resolution here. And I would like to read this resolution. It says, "Whereas the city council is pleased to honor Auburn City Schools and its faculty and its staff and students for their excellent achievements and contributions both inside and outside the classroom. Whereas the Auburn High School Girls Tennis Team recently claimed the 2023 Alabama High School Athletic Association 7A State Championship. And whereas the team earned several accolades, including securing the Blue Map Trophy. Whereas the team also took home individual state championships for Claire Bozeman and Camilla Bozeman in number one doubles, for Sophie Smith and Hanbi Yun in number three doubles, Camilla Bozeman in number two singles, Victoria Chu in number four singles, Shere Ajanker in number five singles, and Catherine Kirkland in number six singles. And whereas the championship team consists of Camilla Bozeman, Claire Bozeman, Victoria Chu, Shere Ajanker, Naomi Hanks, Catherine Kirkland, Jenny Park, Sophie Smith, and Hanbi Yun. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the City of Auburn, Alabama, that the council hereby recognizes and formally congratulates the players and coaches from the Auburn High School Girls Tennis Team for their outstanding achievements and their exemplary efforts in representing Auburn City Schools and the City of Auburn. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread upon the minutes of this meeting and presented to head coach Hollis Davis and her team, adopted and approved by the City of Auburn, Alabama this sixth day of June 2023." Congratulations, ladies.
The Auburn High Girls Tennis Team, that was actually the morning after graduation. So they got up and met me at the high school at nine o'clock that morning. So I appreciate their enthusiasm, willingness to do that. Just a couple of things from me tonight. I just want to thank everybody that participated in the mayor's Memorial Day breakfast. I appreciate the Mayor Pro Tem Witten taking my place that day as I was on a family trip. And all the reports I got is it went really, really well, and I just appreciate the support from the Economic Development Team and all the other staff that helped and participated in making that to be the outstanding event as it is. This Friday night is Summer Nights in downtown Auburn. I hope everybody will set time to come and be a part of Summer Nights and see all the artwork and enjoy some food and some fun and some entertainment in downtown Auburn. And I want to thank the Auburn Public Library. Recently, they had their kickoff to the Summer Learning Series, Summer Learning Kickoff, and they invited me to come and participate with them. It was a lively, raucous crowd over there that evening, and a lot of children having a good time and having a lot of fun, and we look forward to a lot of kids reading this summer. Anyone else have an announcement tonight?
I do.
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to remind everybody that, once again, this is the time of the year that we celebrate Juneteenth. So this year, it's going to be a little bit different from the last couple of years that Auburn has celebrated Juneteenth. And we're going to combine our efforts with Opelika this year. So we have Mayor Anders and Mayor Fuller that will come out and do a proclamation. And on Friday night, actually, two nights for Auburn, and two, two days for Opelika and two days for Auburn. So Opelika will start on at Friday night, and they will have their usual Juneteenth downtown on the Courthouse Square. And they have food, entertainment, food trucks and so forth. And they probably going to have over 1,000 people because they have a Friday night food truck anyway. So, and so just come out and patronize if you want, if you can, Opelika. And on Saturday, Opelika will do a Miss Senior Citizens' Juneteenth. And so that's going to be at the Covington Rec Center at four o'clock. So if you want to come out and watch some of the senior citizens stuff, then it'll, it'll be, it's for 6:00 to 5:00. So, and it'll start at four. And the event on Friday night will start at six o'clock. On Saturday, Sunday, Auburn will do their first Juneteenth parade. And the parade will be on Borkin Street. So if anybody want to come, it's going to start at 5:00 PM, and I know it's Father's Day. So I know somebody's sitting in their head, wow, it's Father's Day. But, well, yes, it is Father's Day. So enjoy your Father. Come out, watch about 45 minutes of a parade of going down Borkin from Borkin School to Drake School. So, and on Sunday, Monday, June 19th, which is the holiday, there will be a big free event at Kiesel Park for Juneteenth. So if NLU has come in the past, everybody already know that most of everything, well, everything out there will be free. They have free food, free entertainment concessions, games, prizes. And when I say food, I mean sold food, fried fish, you name it, we got it. So just come out for those four days and enjoy the event. And I look forward to seeing most of you there, all of you. And I just want to thank Parks and Recreation for getting it, getting it prepared for Juneteenth. And I know, I see Rob Hollinshead, he, he prepared for City Fest, so let's tell him to get it ready for Juneteenth. So thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Anyone else?
I have a quick announcement.
Please.
The Auburn High School Auburn Blue FFA, Future Farmers of America, are currently in Montgomery at the state convention, and there are several teams that are competing and will be hopefully bringing home some statewide awards from our Future Farmers of America group at Auburn High School.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
Our council meeting today just happens to fall on the 79th anniversary of D-Day. On 6 June 1944, Allied forces landed on the coast of Normandy. It was the largest seaborne invasion in history. Their objective was to free France and then Europe, and they did. But the cost was high, and the beaches were mined and heavily defended, and 10,000 Allied troops died that day alone. 2,400 of them were from the United States. Took a week of huge casualties for the Allies to gain a foothold. There's an American cemetery at Normandy. It's on a six-mile stretch of beach code-named Omaha Beach. There are 9,306 American servicemen buried there, and I hope to see it one day. These young men changed the world through their courage. I just wanted to honor and remember them today. And by the way, more than 2,500 Australians took part in D-Day, according to my research.
Thank you, Sonny. Anyone else?
Sure, Kelly.
I'd like to thank you for that commemoration there. My father was one of the paratroopers going in the night before on the beaches. But the other thing I'd like to mention is that before our next meeting, we'll have the 14th of June, which will be the 248th anniversary of the founding of the United States Army. So that day coincides with Flag Day. So if you keep that in mind, the, the Army has been and will be there to defend all of us in the future. So that's a great thing. 248 years, the oldest service.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Thanks for sharing that, Mr. Mayor. On a wildly lighter note, and echoing Mayor Pro Tem Witten's comments about competition, the Auburn Fire Department fielded a team to go to Opelika last weekend, and I was lucky enough to be part of the audience at the Burger Wars competition where the reigning champions, Opelika Fire Department prevailed again for the second year running. I've got faith in our Auburn guys. We just have to get back there next year. Really enjoyed it. It was one of those rare opportunities. I get to wear two hats and root for both teams, so it was great.
If I may, from a health and insurance perspective, we're okay with them not winning.
Anyone else? Okay. We'll move ahead with Auburn University Communications. Good afternoon.
Over the past few weeks, seven Auburn University students have been awarded the Department of Defense Smart Scholarship. It provides full tuition for up to five years, a stipend, summer internships, as well as full-time employment upon graduation. And from what I understand about defense contracting, that money's not going away anytime soon. So it's really good that these Auburn students are getting in the mix early before they even graduate. These are really prestigious careers, going to Huntsville to work for like the missile defense agency and stuff. So really excited for those students to be pursuing that. Also, Forbes Magazine has recognized Auburn University as one of the best employers for new graduates, which is always a good thing, I guess. And for the second year in a row, Auburn University has been recognized by the Intercollegiate Flying Association as the all-around most outstanding collegiate aviation program in the nation. So as an aviation student myself, this is kind of like the Stanley Cup for aviation programs. They, like this huge lowing trophy. It's got like every school that's ever gotten it before. The original judges were like Charles Lindbergh and people like that. But over the past couple of years, it was won by Liberty, I think, three or four years in a row. Finally, it's coming back to Auburn, along with Hugh Freeze as well. So that's something to be excited about. Finally, Camp War Eagle, another session tomorrow. We'll be finishing up Thursday. But other than that, that's all for me, and War Eagle.
Yeah, War Eagle. Thank you very much. This time is opportunity for citizens to communicate with the city council about items that are on tonight's agenda. This is only about an item on tonight's agenda. So if you'd like to speak to the city council about anything on the agenda tonight, please come forward and give us your name and address for the record. You'll have five minutes.
So Rob Anders, you are the mayor, is that correct?
That's what they say.
That's what your name tag says, too. Are you aware that a black man of color myself, Ricardo Gary, died in police custody without a crime on November 27th?
Sir, at this point in time, it's an opportunity for people to speak about items that are on the agenda. Okay? So all the-
But public safety isn't on the agenda anywhere?
No, there's nothing to do with that tonight. It's specifically about items that are on the agenda tonight. There'll be a time at the end of the meeting for you to address the city council about anything you'd like to.
So, okay, everybody still going to be here at the end? For sure, I'll wait to the end then.
Yep. Anyone? Okay, we'll move forward. City Manager's Communications.
Under City Manager's Communications this evening, we have the announcement of two vacancies on the Auburn Downtown Redevelopment Authority. Terms begin July 19th and end July 18th, 2029. We also have the announcement of one vacancy on the Indian Pines Recreation Authority. The term will begin upon appointment and end June 20th, 2027. Applications open for both positions tomorrow on the city's website, and appointments for both boards will be made at the July 11th meeting. Our first item of business is the Consent Agenda. Does any council member wish to remove an item from the consent agenda and deal with that item individually?
Anyone? Yes.
Item number eight, Bravo four.
Eight, B four. Anyone else? Okay, eight, B four.
Item eight, B four is a request from One Bike LLC, doing business as One Bike Coffee for a retail beer on or off premise and a retail table wine on or off premise alcohol beverage license for property located at 1100 South College Street, Unit 106.
Move for approval.
Second.
This motion is second. Yes, sir, Mr. Warren.
I had some tutorial on this, but I just didn't quite get it. Is, is the point of this license where it says on and off premises for retail beer and for retail wine, does that mean that they would like to sell wine with a cap on it out the door?
So there's only two types of licenses for beer or wine, as the Alabama Alcohol Beverage Control Board defines them. It's one for off-premise sales only, which would be for grocery stores, many marts, what have you, where you're only buying beer or wine there, and you're carrying it somewhere else where it is lawful to consume it. If you want to have on-premise consumption, so therefore you want to serve beer or wine inside your business, your only other licensing choice, if it's just beer and wine, leave liquor out of it, your only other licensing choice is, is the license category that allows for on and off-premise sales. Doesn't mean that you're going to sell it for off-premise consumption. It means you have that ability. There, there isn't any other such license category. So I do not, unless somebody, a representative is here, know if they intend to sell it. Is anybody from One Bike Coffee here? No, I don't know if they intend to sell anything for off-premise consumption, but because that's a licensing choice, if that was the only thing they wanted to do was sell closed bottles of wine and beer for people to take away, then they would have applied for an off-premise only license. So therefore, my belief is they at least want to serve it on-premise.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? All right, we have a motion as second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Do we have a motion to approve the balance of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Have a motion as second. Any other questions? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda is approved. Resolutions?
Under resolutions, item 10A1 authorizes a tax abatement for Coca-Cola Bottling Company, United Incorporated, located at 511 West Veterans Boulevard. The company anticipates hiring 71 new employees over the next year and investing approximately $15 million.
Move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion as second. Any comments or questions?
I got a question, and I only got this question because someone called me last night asking me about the location of this bottling company. Is it, is it something that we're getting ready to bill? Is it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
It's not, it's not built yet. So if you buy Panty George's Kitchen on South College Street, turn onto West Veterans Boulevard, turn right and head toward Bucky's. It will be, it's an undeveloped property on your left just before you enter Auburn Technology Park North. So a conditional use was approved for this distribution center some time ago by Planning Commission and City Council, but you're correct, there has to be a whole construction activity.
Okay. And I think the reason why the person was asking is because they work out that way in. So they were just trying to figure out, is it going to be a large building or what, what size?
Mr. Dunlap, do you know what size building?
It would be on the fabric of 70-plus thousand square feet.
70-plus thousand square feet, if the microphone didn't pick up. Any other questions?
This will be for bottling, is that correct?
Bottling plant, correct.
Thank you.
Is it bottling or distribution?
I'm sorry, it's distribution. I apologize. Not bottling, distribution. Thank you.
It's a bottling company, but this is a distribution plant.
Is distribution, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, good. This is exciting. Just want to add that. Anyone else? All right, we've got a motion as second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries.
Item 10A2 authorizes a tax abatement for Donghee, Alabama LLC, located at 2550 Innovation Drive. The company is expanding and anticipates hiring 100 additional employees over the next two years, and they are investing an additional $82.2 million in building expansions and capital equipment.
Move for approval.
Second.
All right. Got a motion as second. Any comments or questions? Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. Congratulations to our Economic Development Team.
Item 10B1 authorizes a contract with Business Interiors Incorporated for the purchase of furniture for the New Environmental Services and Public Works Complex in the amount of $325,388.
Move for approval. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions?
I just got a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
I know you're excited about the new furniture. Actually, I ride that road every day, coming and going back and forth from work. And one day it looked like it was, it was just an open area. And then today, when I ride along there, it looks like it's ready for people to move in. It looks like it all happened so quick. But congratulations.
Yeah.
And I know that y'all are going to enjoy it because it looks really, really nice out there.
It's going to be a very appropriate place for great teams to work out of. So we're very excited for y'all. All right.
Have a question?
Yes, please.
In the, in the packet, we've got multiple proposals. So this is the roll-up of all the proposals.
Correct. For both- Correct, for both Environmental Services and Public Works, from a furnishings perspective, now you will see other things coming over the summer. We budgeted, you know, for furniture, fixtures, and equipment. So Environmental Services has a lot of equipment based on our fleet maintenance that will still come before you, and other things from, I don't know, compressors or other items, lifts, other things, whatever's not included in there, and staff's gonna look at me and say that's included in the building, but tire carousels, all kinds of things that have to happen, and so more contracts to come over the summer. But these were all budgeted and expected. And I also want to commend the staff, they pared down a good bit of the furniture they could have purchased, and they're moving things, instead of leaving them behind, they're reusing a good bit of the existing things that they have. So we're always the great stewards of the taxpayer dollar.
Okay, but this resolution combines two separate proposals.
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely, that's why you'll see in the resolution, it refers to state contract and then two separate dollar amounts combined to be one.
Okay, thank you.
Just so we clarified, yep.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 10B2 authorizes a contract with Structural Restoration Solutions Incorporated, doing business as Everclear Enterprises Incorporated, for the Gay Street Parking Deck Maintenance and Repair Project in the amount of $394,933.06.
Move for approval.
Second.
All right, we have a motion of seconds. Any comments or questions?
Will this also include pressure washing?
Mr. Ballard.
Yes, they'll do some pressure washing in advance of the top coating on the surface, but we did not elect the alternate cleaning of other surfaces, so the facade will not be cleaned.
Thank you.
It is a pricey undertaking to do that, and it may be something we can contract separately. Sometimes when we get it out of an overall bid, we get a better price, so... But I take that, that there's interest in us pressure washing it. I heard you.
Yes.
Any other questions, comments?
If I may, Mayor, one thing, several of you asked me, and I think it's important that everybody has the same information, that people do ask about the useful life of the parking deck. Every time we do this, it extends it 10 years. I anticipate and would like to signal, you know, from my seat, that in the next 10 years, I'm not sure, 10 years from now, we plan to spend this level of money. That deck was built in the middle of the 80s and is beginning to deteriorate. It is structurally safe, and these things will help it, and it rains on multiple levels of the deck that are covered. If you're on the first floor or the second floor, it rains on your car, no matter what you do, water drips from the ceiling, what have you. But I, everybody asks, well, you know, I don't think $400,000 for 10 years of useful life is a bad investment on our part at $40,000 a year, not a bad deal. Over time, we'll begin to discuss if we do eliminate that and what it looks like in the future for something else to go there. And I'm not saying we wouldn't put parking back, I'm just saying, we may begin to have those discussions over the next decade.
Any other comments or questions? All right, we have a motion of second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then the motion carries.
Mayor, we have one other item of business. Item 11A authorizes a temporary street closure on East Magnolia Avenue between College Street and Gay Street on Sunday, June 25th, to display vintage cars that are passing through Auburn as part of the Great Race.
Move for approval.
Second.
All right, we have a motion of second. Any other comments or questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then the motion carries.
Mayor, those are all the items of business we have for you this evening.
Okay. In just a minute, we'll open up the Citizens' Open Forum, and this is an opportunity for citizens to speak to the City Council about anything that would be, that's on your mind. You have three minutes to speak to the Council, and we ask that you share your name and address for the record. Also want to encourage all citizens to be professional and respectful and civil when they address the City Council, and your comments should be directed towards the City Council as a whole, and certainly not towards any individual staff member. Mr. Hall, would you like to be first?
You know it.
Okay.
So I'm aware you just changed it and said it directed towards everybody, but I wanted to just tell you specifically, because you opened my email seven times and didn't respond. But it was regarding, I was just asking-
Mayor, name and address for the record, please.
My name is Reggie Hall, 830 Nordon, U Drive Apartment 33. I'm the brother of Ricardo Gary, who was killed in police custody without a crime. And Mr. Anders, I wanted to ask you, are you aware of this?
Mr. Hall, I will not be answering any questions from you tonight, and you're welcome to take your three minutes and make your comments.
I know you didn't answer my email as well, and that just shows what type of leader you are, you know? And I just wanted to make everybody more aware that, yes, Ricardo Gary, he was killed in police custody without a crime, and it was not addressed by any one of y'all? And you knew about it? I'm sure you did, and it was not addressed by you. And on behalf of the black community, I speak for everybody as to say that a lot of things go on that are unjust with public safety. That's all I have to say.
I just want to stop and make this statement real quick. As an elected official of the City of Auburn, I am certainly mindful of the tragic loss of Ricardo Gary and the sadness that his family's experienced and will continue to experience, and for that, they have my deepest condolences. However, because of the threat of litigation against the city by Mr. Gary's family, I've been advised, and we have all been advised, by the city's Attorney's Office to not make any comment about the incident at this time. Who will be next?
Robert Wilkins, 261 Denton Drive, Auburn, Alabama. Good evening, Mayor and Council. The Auburn City Council on May 16th made an emotional decision instead of a financial decision. Seven, four, one abstained and one absent, to give the city manager a $35,000 raise, when many of us cannot even pay our bills. Was $15,000 not enough to manage the seventh-largest city in Alabama and the ninth-fastest-growing city in Alabama? In just four years, we will pay the mayor $1 million, including $200,000 in benefits. Now, are you going to give all the city employees a 16% raise? Is this good stewardship of the city money? How much due diligence was done by the city council? I'm not even sure how many employees are in the City of Auburn. In 2021, the website Open Gov Pay says that we had 560 employees. The city website says 700-plus, and you, Mayor, last council meeting, we said 900, nearly 900. What, I wanted to ask what these three people have in common. Megan McGowan, Troy Dunlap, and Clarence Stewart. First of all, they're excellent city employees, but also in 2021, they were the highest-paid employees of any city in the state of Alabama. Besides all the growth in Auburn, inflation alone has increased gross sales 7% in '21 and '21 and '22. The property tax that I have personally has increased nearly 40% in eight years that I've been here in Auburn. Maybe the writer that I sat by that I know from the Auburn Opelika News could write something reporting the overpaid city employees compared to other city employees. City of Huntsville, average wage is $50,048, this was all in 2021, with 2,567 employees. The City of Montgomery averages $44,403, with 2,247 employees. But the City of Auburn, average wage is $64,713, with 560 employees. Or, you know, maybe they could report on how much money we spent dealing with the enforcement of 3288, the legal costs and the loss of revenue from 151 families, some of the displacement or the tax revenue loss. Please decrease our grocery sales tax like the state of Alabama's doing, please. Figure it out, Council. It's about time citizens get a raise. Thank you.
Who will be next?
You got a brutal job there, Mayor. Robert Grantham, 2093 Keystone Drive, Camden Ridge. I'm the HOA Committee Board Member there. As many of you may or may not know, more billboards have been constructed along North Donahue. This construction in the area has drawn a lot of attention, not just in Ward III, but throughout our city. A petition that I created, signed and have supported, has been seen over 11,000 times, it's been shared over 338 times, and just a few minutes ago, it's been supported over 907 times and been signed locally and gaining more support daily. The petition is concentrated not on just one section or area of Auburn, it is concentrated on, or is it concentrated on one individual group? It's more focused citywide, because there's a concern that all these billboards and whatnot are gonna be taking over our city. I'm here this evening to ask that this council to support annexation of Lee County Islands by working with the Lee County Commission, to have them review their building codes and to ensure, when a landowner seeks annexation, they annex 100% of the property to eliminate county islands like the ones we've seen on North Donahue.
Thank you.
Mr. Grantham, I just want to say thank you for your efforts in leading the citizens of particularly Ward III, but also the whole city, in bringing attention to this. And I do know that we have two members of the Lee County, or Lee County Commission and their engineer in the audience tonight, because they're also equally interested, and we're continuing to have further conversations, which I know you'll be a part of, and I just want to say thank you for your efforts, and we are still working through to find solutions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Martha Champ, 307 Camellia Drive. Obscene books remain in the Auburn Public Library. Anyone who wants to fight this and remove them from the shelves, see me after this meeting. The books are harmful and sin brings sorrow, but now let's talk of better things, a good book. The month of June is devoted to the Sacred Heart of Jesus, the Sacred Heart that has so loved man. One drop of His holy blood has great power. He offers all people true love and healing. Better yet, He offers everlasting life and eternal bliss and felicity in heaven. He covers all our sins. He opens the door of heaven for those who trust His blood atonement, blood atonement. June is the month of the Sacred Heart. June 16th is the feast day. Now, I will talk of a book, the Book of Revelation. It's Christ's visions of the end. The powers of darkness are conquered, the seven angels have a message, a beast like a leopard rises from the sea with ten heads, the Antichrist. It speaks like a dragon, it forces earth's inhabitants, the one from the earth, to worship the first beast and deludes them. Revelation 19:11 then shows Jesus of the Sacred Heart. John says, "I saw heaven wide open; there before me was a white horse. Its rider's name was faithful and true, for he is just in judgment and just in war. On his head were many crowns; he has called the word of God. Armies of heaven follow him on white horses. From his mouth there goes a sharp sword with which to smite the nations. He treads the winepress of the retribution of God; on his robe and thigh is the name King of Kings and Lord of Lords. This is Jesus of the Sacred Heart in victory." Now, back to books, that's a good book, that's a powerful book, that book gives us hope. I still oppose the evil books that remain in the Auburn Library. They sexualize children, they urge them to unnatural sin. Those who have placed these books there will be made known to the city and their names known. They should resign now. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Who will be next? We'll close Citizens' Communication.
Mayor, if I may, now, because, uh, Citizens' Communications closing. Ms. Megan, do you know off the top of your head, as your personnel director, what is the cost, what percentage is personnel cost to the City of Auburn in our yearly budget?
Well, my finance director would know, or my HR director, we're below 50% of the general fund budget, much below, we're in the 40s. Do you recall the number?
Yeah, and I don't know the number off the top of my head.
We can look it up in the budget, but it is below 50%. Most cities are in the 70% to 80% range of their general fund budget for personnel expenses. The 900 employee mark also is because you add part-time employees in. In the summertime, we do a lot of camps and other things, and we employ extra people in the summer.
But for years, we've done less with more here in the City of Auburn.
Yes, sir.
When it comes to employees, I'm very proud of what we've done here in this city. I, too, was a part of it some 10 years ago, working here, and believing me, our employees, from the city manager to the very bottom employee, who you may want to call, whoever it may be, they earned their money here in the City of Auburn. They worked for it, they're proud to work for this organization. And as far as having a good city manager, I have worked here when we hadn't had such a good city manager, and has an employee at the bottom of it, and we suffered from the top to bottom because of lack of leadership. I won't call any names, I wouldn't do anybody that way, but that's just to make clear on that. Our, just so you'll know, our percentage of our budget every year is at 50% or less for employees.
Correct, that's a goal of ours, and we've achieved it all 26 years I've worked for the city.
These other cities would be 70, 80%.
Yes, sir.
So, and far as the other speaker we had here tonight, I want to say I support the Auburn Police. If they're wrong, I won't support them, but if they're right, I'm gonna support them to the day I die. I have supported them since I was old enough to walk around and see a police officer walk through a store. I support them, my family supports them, my family, a generation has supported them, will continue to support them. And I would also like to say tonight, given that same incident, one of our council people has taken some flak because of it, I read some disparaging remarks on social media of Ms. Connie, some things that were said about her. Nobody works any harder for their community than Connie Taylor. I don't agree with everything she says and does, probably disagree with her more than I agree with her on a lot of things.
Oh, really?
But I will say this, she takes her community, her job to heart, she does what's best for the community, and I am proud to have worked and served with her on this council. And again, last thing I want to leave in your mind, I'll support the Auburn Police to the day I die, if they're right. If they're wrong, I'll be the first to stand up and say they're wrong. But when they're right, I'm gonna stand by them, and I feel like their entire city will stand by them, and I appreciate the work our officers, men and women, do for us each and every... Because of many women of our police force, I can go home, lay down, and get a good night's rest tonight. My family can get a good night's rest. I don't want to worry my wife or child driving across town in the middle of the night, because I know we have a good police officer out there taking care of us, and I appreciate it. It's a tough job, and I appreciate it, and thank you for listening to me.
Well, I just want to thank you for that comment, Mr. Dawson. And I also, I'm glad to know that people support me and the decisions that I have to make on this council, and it's not personal, but I do have to follow the law as other council members and myself, and the mayor, and the city manager, and all the employees of the city. So I don't want, you know, I hate that it's taken personal, but hey, that's life. On another good note, I don't know if I mentioned to everybody about the June teens, the entire public and community is invited.[1789.83]